We're recording.
On the meeting to order, this is the meeting of the Board of, Hampton Board Selectmen, the Board of Health, Town Hall, Zartarian, June 7th, 2021, at approximately 6:00, 2:00 P. M. Uh, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I believe that the United States of America and this republic, which stands one nation under God, in this little liberty and justice for all.
Is anyone recording the meeting? Oh, no. Can everyone, anyone moving in, can they hear us?
Can you, can everyone hear us? Ed?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. We have any minutes? Right. The first item on the agenda is a dangerous dog hearing being held under chapter, uh, 140, section 157, Massachusetts General laws. It is such, uh, we will swear on the witnesses and take the name, just the name of the people here. Shelley Spears, Drew Hatch.
What's his name?
Robert Gassman.
Gassman. And?
Angela Gassman.
Angela Gassman. Uh, we have to, as part of the, that general law, we have to swear on any witnesses. So if we please, uh, do you sign and swear that the testimony or about to give at this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and the pains and challenges of it. So what we have is we have a series of complaints. What's the dog's name, by the way?
Nietzsche.
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 Can you just start, N is in the N?
It doesn't. Like the, like the author? Uh, yes, oh, yes.
I know, it's like, I'm surprised that we knew that. He asked us to spell it, it's happening.
The, we have a series of complaints. Uh, first one is on, uh, the police department and the annual patrol officer. The first one is on January 13th, 2021, uh, from a Shannon Sokolowski's, Shannon here or Shannon?
No, they moved to New Hampshire.
They moved to New Hampshire. Shannon's complaint, uh, is that Nietzsche, uh, attacked. She said, I went to the mailbox with my dog on a leash. All of a sudden, the neighbor's dog, German Shepherd, came charging at us crossing, uh, boundary lines and was bearing all teeth and snarling and barking. It was, I was attempting to, it was attempting to bite my dog in the neck while I was, while I was, um, screaming at it to stop, and I was kicking and throwing things at it while trying to back away, up my driveway with my dog to escape. It followed us up the driveway in this manner, and the owner heard the scream, and the owner called the dog back to their, to their property. Then Shelley, you reported on that as well?
Yes, yeah, yes, Shannon called me, and, uh, yeah, she told me what happened, and then I had to write an animal complaint.
Okay, so you, your complaint, if you wrote, uh, on the reported date and time, the Hampton Police Department Dispatch Call me asked me to call Shannon. Shannon told me she was walking up by 457 Main Street, the German Shepherd that is usually behind an electric fence, ran out of the fence, grabbed her yellow lap, smiled right next. Shannon was able to get to the park. There were no visible wounds at the time. Um, we went to the home. The next day I went there, Angelina was home. I told her the dog had done, and told her she could not, the dog could not be out loose again. And, uh, you attached her for both dogs with current ready vaccines. And then there was an additional complaint on February 10th, 2021, uh, Judith. And next time on February 10th, 2021, you said you were walking by 457 Main Street and had an issue with the German Shepherd that was there. That's your letter. I called Angelina, the owner of the dog, and February 12th, she said she would be available to talk to the 15th. And one day, this is your report, Shelley.
Yeah.
I went to Angelina's house at 6:00 P. M. Angelina said her dog is on an electric fence that they control from the house. I told them to have him, uh, out in the backyard. I told her an aggressive acting dog, like, it cannot be out in the front yard. She agreed to keep it in the backyard, and we gave her a $25 fine at that time. Judy, if this is correct, is, you said this morning, I was, this would be February 10th. This morning, I was walking along Main Street in front of your home. Your dog began barking furiously. I turned to go up into my driveway, he came right out and teeth bared, barking severely on the tack. Three times I held him to get away from me and swung a magazine at him. He would turn, and they'd come right back at me. The third time I swung the magazine, hit his nose, and he ran toward the house. I was able to reach my driveway and get away. We were both on town property first two times, but the third time I was on the other. In the past, he attacked my neighbor's dog, driven him by the shore while we were driving. That's very tense. And then there was another complaint on March 1st, 2021. This is also by Shannon, and Judy also witnesses. This particular case. Shannon wrote, I went to the mailbox with my dog on a leash, and the neighbor's dog, German Shepherd, charged at us at full speed with all teeth bared, growling and snarling. The dog proceeded to try to bite my dog at the neck as I was trying to pull my dog away, all the while screaming at the dog to stop giving, uh, into my retractable, was hitting it with it into my retractable leash. A man, the pickup truck stopped traffic. He was screaming at the German Shepherd and distracting it, so myself and my dog escaped. I heard from, uh, beyond me, I, I heard a man, that, and the man from, from the truck screamed at the, this person saying, your, your dog, it's an explosive dog, is attacking a woman. Then the German Shepherd was called back to his property by the owner. Uh, note between the first incident, January, the second, March, my elderly landlady was also similarly attacked by the dog. And Shelley filed a report then as well. And he also ticketed them, you, you also ticketed them $50. And then there's a May 1st incident. I'm not sure who this is from.
It's from Judy, I didn't know about that.
Okay. So Judy writes again, that around 9:30 A. M., I just ride home. As I climbed out of my car, I heard several dogs barking down a Main Street. Traffic was stopped in both directions. The person had a hold of the dogs, calling me across the street. On the other side of the street were two people checking their two dogs. I went down, asked them if they were okay, and if the dogs were okay. They said they were. I believe they were four thirds of Main Street. I request that the county of the dog officer, because the history of the dog lives in 257 Main Street. Dog, well, someone is, is there an electric fence there?
There is an electric fence, and you cannot leave the property. So I also have a camera. So the first complaints, the dog was on my property. He did that if it was on a leash, or a mailbox, or whatever, I don't know. But the dog was off leash one of the times, and one other time, the dog was on my property. The dog can't be the property, uh, at all, for, for the electric fence. Since then, I put up a runner, and it's only outside on the street. And there's nowhere really.
And I will, I will press to that. I have rarely seen the dog since then.
No, ever, ever since, I just got back in the country on Wednesday. I've been gone since basically October. But, uh, so she's been dealing with the dog. So at first, we shortened the distance of the electric fence to keep them away from the road even more. And then once, I think it was this lady who came or talked to Angelina, and then they just stopped letting the dog out completely. Except, like, unsupervised, just let her out, watching, and having to do his business. Then let him right back in. And then as soon as I came back on, uh, into the country on Wednesday, I put up the runner.
Oh, what's the dog?
Work, and he's been professionally trained, out in Austin.
He's very well trained. I would like to know what the commands that he gave to him.
He's only aggressive towards other dogs. And only aggressive towards other dogs.
I did not walk. I was walking.
It's the German Shepherd, he's a dog. He came close to our property.
So you're saying that he responded to commands very well?
Yeah, he's been professionally trained.
Every time I've seen somebody on the porch gives a command, and the dog turned right around and goes back to the house.
And so now the dog would only be outside on the?
Only on a, only on the road.
And the electric fence as well?
Yeah, it's just a, and, and this nonsense. Runners in the backyard, it's in the backyards. He came over to the driveway.
Hopefully that satisfies it. And since the May 1st incident, you haven't seen anything?
I haven't seen anything else, Chris. Rarely seen the dog at all. Usually right back at the porch.
If, if, the electric fence, how did he get to the street?
They would have to put it on.
The son told me that he isn't behind, he doesn't watch. That's what he was saying.
So no collar sometimes?
Yeah, they forget to put it on, it's charging.
Yeah.
But it's not going to be in the shilling.
So now you have to run. Do you walk the dog on a leash frequently? In the area, through the park, or anything like that?
Yeah, well, I pick and play it, so.
Okay.
I don't really necessarily walk it.
But you don't?
She takes him to the park.
Uh, leash the whole time?
Yeah.
The park, we have Memorial Park?
Yeah.
And how does he react to others?
The dog will, will.
My other concern now with those incidents is that you're pretty close to Memorial Park. I mean, you're right there.
Yeah.
And there's going to be a lot of activity there, so kids are in the, you know, what they call the summer camp, and the, the spray, spray park. How does he react to kids?
I haven't seen him act aggressive for a human being, ever.
Has he been your dog the whole four years?
Oh, yes.
It's like, so you raise him since a puppy?
Oh, yeah. Only towards other dogs.
So wasn't he here last year when the park was on, or when, when did the dog?
I thought the house.
So you're going to keep him on the run?
Yeah.
Or on the leash at all times? And we're going to, we're going to train the other members of the family to have the electric thing on it?
Well, if he's on the, on the run, he doesn't need the?
Yeah. Is that reasonable for anybody? Not anyone?
Uh, where is the one?
It's the side yard. I don't have, I have a tiny front yard. It's the side yard, although that.
I got two more questions, and pretending to the runner. How heavy is the dog? 100 pounds? 75? 80 pounds?
Yeah.
And which runner did you get? Did you get the, the red line, or the silver line? Silver line's the high test for heavy dogs.
It's the metal.
Okay.
The metal line. I got a picture of it.
Because I know, I've had dogs break through runners before, because they're the wrong way to run for the dog.
I heard a picture of it, see it, you see the placement of it.
Actually, if you could email that picture to Shelley, we'll file, that would be the best. And we would show, bring the file and close up. This was the action taken. Maybe even, if you, with your permission, if Shelley went, went, I took a picture of the dog on the run. I have a picture on the run, as you can see, he's nowhere near the road. Set all of that. Done.
Now that's a show.
That's the driver on the road.
Yeah.
So he was on the road.
Yeah, I just don't think we should be on the side of the road.
Okay.
And then what about the fines? You could find, I'd like to do a fine statement.
Huh?
I don't, did you guys?
What is the fine, what is the fine for? Because I never liked my property. I'd like to know.
Or he was in chief driver, door of the driver.
Uh, I don't.
Do you have footage of him?
Yeah, it, it copies over itself, though. So it's not, I'm not going to have it for months ago. But when it was soon happened, I would. So I think there are few of those fines.
But I thought you wouldn't use.
I wasn't, I can view it online.
But you said there are times perhaps when the collar was uncharged, et cetera, so it certainly could have been.
It could have, yeah. But those people didn't make the complaint.
Yeah, she went across the street and asked, the girl even came to our house, so you consider dog, or, or, I'm just going to have dogs. Not necessary, but for our staff.
But she didn't feel unnecessary. I'd like to feel this one.
Didn't the dog was in the driveway?
I know the dog was in the driveway.
Are there any fines?
And Shannon would get a rail twice, and the dog was in the driveway. At the mailbox.
I only see one side.
We appreciate your efforts, getting the one of your setup. We all have a small neighborhood here. Yeah. Well, the people? The dog's going to be on the run, you're going to keep him on your leash when you're out.
I'm waiting.
You're going to wait one foot. I don't agree with that.
Yeah.
Two years. We'll send you a letter, every letter. All the time.
One more.
Anything else? Okay, the hearing's closed. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Well, I'll drop the letter too. My famous letter. All right, the next item on the agenda is the fiber optic line.
So I would like to, uh?
No, next.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's the speed of fiber.
All right. Anyway, we all flustered there, right? So I think we should, um, do some research, and I'd like to propose a research committee for, on the possibilities of bringing fiber optic into town. Now, we already know we have the fiber coming down the road, so I figure it would be good service to our, our citizens and the residents of town, and try to get them some reliable internet, a higher speed, maybe lower price, those. But we have a committee that could look into this, I think it would be a good option.
Well, here's, I'll bring you the details on, and remember, it was broadband 123, last mile thing. I think it might have been during the Patrick administration, they were really pushing Bob Soffler there. They're really pushing broadband and fiber up to small communities. United States of Oklahoma. We do have a setup in the town hall. We do have fiber at different points throughout the community as well, police station, schools, and give a data convention, then put the call up on committee.
Yeah. Yeah.
It'd be 25 people.
Think that, right? I'm thinking a lot less than that.
Judging by the response we get.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
No, is this going to improve the, the quality of, like, Wi-Fi, like, I have to, I want to make a phone call. I have to go to the end of the street. No.
You have to make a phone call from the end of your street?
Yeah, that's, that's self-serviced.
That's self-serviced. But if you want to do Wi-Fi calling, then yeah, you could obviously do that from there. You know, right now, I think.
I want to get, want to, good.
Yeah, so right now, I think we're, the basic service is like 100 megabits a second. You know, you can get the upgraded package of 400, but none of it's fiber. It's all coaxial cable technology. Fiber optics is all new lines, you know, that's gigabit service, it's 1,000 megabits a second. So it's.
You know, that's a good spot for the phone call from the church park.
You're tapping into their Wi-Fi, right?
I know, I have to go to the top, you know, we have the Villanobe Mall. Right, at the road. I want a call, I want a call, but a good call. I have to go there. How many times have I talked to you on the phone?
Can you hear me now? Yeah.
Do you have Verizon? I'll work at something, just pay the bill. AP and T.
Uh, there, there it is. 18, too.
Verizon.
Yeah.
There are dead spots for Verizon in town. All right, so you'll draft, what would Bob, I'm drafting a, 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 a.
Yeah.
You said Town Hall, Zartarian.
That about. Um, the library's request last year. They came to you and you approved it, but it wasn't anything official that was said. You said in the meeting at the pass that, once COVID's over, we would revisit the topic. So. We talked about it, but, um, I just wanted to make sure that going forward, the library has every Thursdays to them. Is that, that's what, that was the request?
Right, but as I always said, every Thursday, unless, as PM said, something municipal comes forward, like there's a public hearing for something, that would address the dog, or like.
Is that how we want to look at it? I'm not sure.
It's just that it's difficult, because they cannot with their schedules, you know, months and weeks.
So we have something working.
But yeah, she says they have the, um, the book clubs, movie nights. Um, you know, she's looking for Thursdays in July, nothing in August, but September through June.
I mean, they must have offered a way to contact people, like if it was a snow day or something. So do I see it happening? Yeah. But just be aware, there may be a need for, for use that might preempt.
Okay, so approval with rare municipalities, right? Yeah.
Are we expecting theater or any groups coming up?
Well, I think I mentioned last week, they had a request that they could run the personal here, and I think, I felt we said, the, the, the Melville Room was promoted for that.
Yes, the sizes, right.
We advertise it, you go ahead. Well, they're doing both the Melville, 12 angry men. So, which is pretty much around a table, so there's a table, that's all they need. So then, take a two and sit next to them. But it's, uh, they're looking for Wednesday nights, starting in mid-July.
See, Wednesdays are tough, because that's when Lamb and then on home and.
Right, but they're not using the Melville Room, they have a public, they need to check here.
You're right.
Yeah. They're going to.
Theater's going to use the Melville Room? Don't you say the theater's going to?
No, they're, they're reverse.
Okay.
Right. Shared Health Services, memorable, understood.
We had another session today with, uh, the representatives of, um, the shared group, that includes Long Meadow, Monson, Wilbraham, and Hampton. Uh, we established that they would put in writing, uh, in the MOU that each town, respectively, can keep any revenue generated from inspections. That's been clarified. Uh, that was indicated, but I said, you know, people change, uh, positions change, people come and go. What happens in a year or two? Uh, we have this understanding, of course, but it's better if it's in writing, so.
I don't, I think the point I brought up before was, while the grant is happening, we keep the revenue, because we don't have a bill from the group so states. Now, in three years, if the grant isn't renewed.
Yes.
I certainly think the town would expect a bill to, just like we do in the veteran district, fund their part. And any excess would be kept over.
Apparently, there's every expectation now, because ARPA has money for health services that will be sent to the state. And there is complete optimism that year two and year three will be completely funded by the DOH, by the Department of Health. And so that's where we are. Um, there's a letter of intent that was sent out this afternoon, basically saying to the Department of Health that, uh, selectmen in this town support the grant, the grant, the granting of money for this purpose. Uh, put that on your agenda for next week. And, uh, we're, uh, I think we're moving forward. I did ask today that, are we, um, in a good position to make sure that the new hire is in place, Laurie submits her retirement in August? I said yes. Um, one of the coordinators, uh, is her son, who now works full-time for the town of Long Meadow, so. I really think this is very similar to what was done in dispatch. The state is going to come forward, they want shared services so much that they're coming forward with a three-year, uh, subsidy for this kind of activity. Um, there's money there to hire very professional, full-time people. Um, we would continue to have a person on site to do some administrative things. That would be Jane.
Well, it's not much different than what we currently have.
No, it's not.
The billing is, you know, separately, but we have one person.
That's right.
Serving three towns.
That's right.
Now, it'll just be.
It is very much the same as what we have. We will have a, a share of the time for the health inspector, and a share of the time for the public health nurse, if we want to go in that direction. Uh, the only difference really is, and we, we get the revenues from inspections. The only difference is that they're going to pay for three years.
Cross, crosswalk signs.
Okay, I have a little.
Demonstration.
Yeah, a little video for you here. This is what we're looking forward to.
The TACO, Rapid, Rapid Flash Beacon, R. R. F. Pedestrian Crosswalk System, have ensured that the increased driver yield by as much as 90%. TACOs are a B, because of the H. W. specified, wake back and simultaneous flash pattern. Multiple side motions and sizes are available. These systems can be solar powered, on top of full control cabinets, side of full control cabinets, or depending upon utility access, systems can be AC powered. The R. R. F. Pedestrian Crosswalk System is that deals with route control crosshairs in high-speed and multi-lane roads. The R. R. F. can be activated multiple ways. All of our push button requires two tunnel model activation confirmation. Nated to be two, not even more. As an instructional sign, provides for extended visual confirmation. TACO's presence detector is available for dangerous crosswalks where pedestrians aren't utilizing, they've been on a push button. O.R.R.'s baller is activated when pedestrians pass through the baller, which are loaded to an anodized aluminum head, secured in copper containers. TACOs are a B, which can easily install at any dangerous pedestrian crosshairs, and instantly help provide safe travels for everyone.
I, um, I think what I'd like to have the selectmen do is, is to agree upon a configuration for the crosswalk, and if you like this system, which I think is the best that I've seen, agree upon that, and then I'll, I'll, I'll seek a contractor who will do the job. I went to COMBYS today, I was going to put it out on COMBYS to see what contractors in the area would be interested. As it turns out, the town doesn't have a COMBYS account. My old account was deleted when I came here. So I got a new account late this afternoon. Want to put out there tomorrow what we're interested in, in, in doing. And, um, you know, I think that that paver system, I mean, they had just the painted crosswalks, doesn't work well in New England when you have sand on the road in the wintertime. Um, you really have to have something more permanent. And so I will, uh, put that out on COMBYS and see what we get for bids. Uh, today, I did not get a chance to call Kentucky and ask them where the, the digital radar monitor is. Uh, they charged us for it, but it hasn't been delivered yet. But I think a combination of.
You were up in Maine, did you stop by Hampton, Maine, ask them if they? Get their receipts?
Well. I wasn't, I've talked to this folk, uh, where they make them in Kentucky a couple times. I'm not sure we speak the same language, so maybe, there could have, there could have been some, some confusion. Um, but no, but I have the bill from them, I have the invoice, and clearly says Hampton, Massachusetts.
What is the price on those signs that you showed us there?
About thirty, thirty-three, thirty-four hundred.
For the pair, thousand?
Thirty-four hundred.
Wow.
Yeah.
Individual or for a pair?
I think it would be for the pair. Um, anyway, we, you know, we're, we've spent 23, we have 100, we can clearly afford this, plus the. Plus the, I think the whole package with the crosswalk and the two signs and so forth. Um, and every step we can take for safety, plus adding on the, the solar, uh, app at the top. We're in the range of, uh, twenty-five or so. Then we have twenty-three that we've already spent, so we've got basically half the money left over. And a decision as to what else we want, we want to do. I did get some comment from some residents who apparently are paying attention to this. And, uh. They are interested in the sidewalk. From, uh, the commons. Uh, so that they can go up to the bagel shop and into the mini mall. We had. We had a design done all the way up to. So we really didn't accept the final design, but they've got a couple of options there. That might be.
With that sidewalk, the comments, the shops there.
Yeah.
Did that fall in the range of the leftover or we? Spotted for more?
Uh. No, I think we. We do concrete, that's expensive. We probably have some delays. For the runaway. I think the best plan that I saw was the one that went around. Uh, the building. I don't know, my thought is let's get this in place and then we can spend, we can figure out how to spend, uh. The other fifty. The other option would be to buy a second. Digital radar monitoring device, because these can be put in various places in town and you can have the readout. Uh, with a message like town meeting May ten. And election.
My other question, with those. Flashing lights, would there be anywhere else in town we could use those? Out front here for the school crossing in the morning or other high-traffic areas that, that crosswalks?
I would have to get clearance for that. From the grantor, because this money was granted. To relieve. Any traffic problems that the town incurs. Or incurred as a result of the MGM casino.
See, we have a traffic lane here. You could do it from Main Street, right? But you couldn't do it from North Road.
Well, I'm thinking of the other one right here on Main Street.
Probably, yeah, Main Street.
Yeah, I think of that price you mentioned, Bob. It's like, you're well under the thirty B limit. We're looking to push this longer. You can pretty much go ahead and buy those.
Yeah.
At thirty-four hundred dollars.
Sure.
We're not even coming close to the need. And, you know, we've been.
But all we need is a contract. Yeah, I was also thinking of talking to, uh, Mark to see. How much the highway department could do if we were to buy the product. Can they install?
And if you could have them install building grant, running overtime, they didn't. Outside of. Which might be good to have them do it since they'll probably be in charge of maintaining it. So maybe it'd be good to have them understand how one together.
The, the paper crosswalk will hold up. For a long time. All it has to be done is that usually they have white stripes on both sides. They have to repaint the white lines.
Is that paper idea make it more visible or? The, the paper concept, is that more visible?
It is more visible and more durable. And. Wi- white lines don't work in New England on main, main arteries.
Also, the papers cover too, but I, I worry about the paper, if you're talking, like, with indentations, that, that builds a bit, tends to get icing. You know, that's where I've seen. And I'm worried about that area. Again, we've seen the high speed coming across Connecticut. Potential icing. I'd like a little more conversation with Mark about that. I like the idea, if you want to put the paper pattern on. But not so much the grooming.
Grooming.
Yeah.
I've got three deep in that.
There you go.
Well, more work is needed on this, but, uh, I think. I've looked at a half a dozen different. Companies that produce signage. This seems to be. What we need, that would fit our needs best. Particularly with the solar, uh, connection at the top. I don't see anything in the chat.
He raises his hand. The participants.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Oh, Ted. All right.
Hi. I was wondering, are you getting two signs, one for each side of the road and are they double-sided?
Two sides, one for each side of the road. Um. I believe they're double-sided. Think they should.
A few days ago, I was up in Northampton and, uh. I know I've mentioned this before, uh, their crosswalks in critical places are slightly raised with their stone and their brick. Just enough so that the cars know they're going over that. So they tend to slow down a little bit more. You go through down, down Northampton, you'll see it.
Okay. Yes, I. That's worth a phone call to, to the mayor up there to see who did it. And, um, how they did it.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Ransomware, cybersecurity.
Yeah, I asked to have that put on. Uh, we actually have a situation a few years back where one department. Had a, an attack and their computer was locked, paid again, unlocked. Uh, this is. And I know I asked you to contact our provider. And they say we're protected, but the protection is also part of training as well. Typically, in pregnant and tested this is that a lot of times ransomware comes in because somebody clicked on the wrong email. And pretty much opened the door for them. It's all well and good to say that your provider. Does a good job of gateway to it. But there are many times that the gateway lets it slip through. What I'd like to see is A, where we are with the provider and B, how about a training session for people here? And we're not some new people, how to recognize what bad emails are, so. And the signs of a phishing attack or those type of things. And I know you heard back from them.
I heard, I, I sent a message to, uh, Entree. But Rem answered back that we are ninety percent. Protected. Of course. There's the other ten percent.
I don't know what that, I didn't understand what that meant. Does that mean nine out of ten computers? Does that mean?
It was, it was basically a little more than a sentence or two.
I know, what, what, they give a relevance, like, what do you mean by ninety percent?
But I, I think the suggestion that you made that we have a training for town employees makes sense. I will announce we're going to do that at the next department head meeting and maybe, uh. See if, uh. Someone from Entree can come and, uh, maybe screen some examples of what they ought to look for.
The Mass Municipal, which, which has been doing a lot with that too, where they may have.
Yes.
Someone who can. Maybe they even have a weapon already done.
Well, it's becoming more of a menace. And even though you think they're going to go after the big fish, like Atlanta.
Oh.
Small-time players. Here we go again.
Did I confirm it?
Yeah. There you go. So we'll follow up on that with, um. Entree.
Yeah, I had a guess that the ten percent that's affected would be through those malicious attacks or email, something like that. I'm sure all the data is jacked up and everything that we have. But, um. You know, that begs the question, you know, do we need to have IT standards?
That's why I said, you know, that's why I think training is good. And you do a good deal and it looks like a real email from the developer or something like that.
Our vacation day care requests, need to remind everyone that they have to get approval from their supervisor. Their appropriate boards for five days.
Yeah.
Time is running out. We don't want to be in the same situation we're last year. Let's see. The blame evaluations.
We're going to move forward with them, uh, with the recommendation from the board last week that, uh, we use the same form. For everyone. Not that smaller form that I gave you.
Dispatch layoffs.
You have it in your, uh. I just passed a copy of it over. It hasn't been sent, so I thought I'd like to see it before I send it.
How much notice do we have to give?
How much?
How much notice do we have to give?
Two weeks. So it's going to go out tomorrow. No suggestions.
Then you, you spoke to, uh.
Yes, yes. In fact, he sent me an opinion. We are complying with, with what he recommended. Uh, you got to offer them their COBRA. We had made an agreement. If you recall in the impact bargaining session. That, uh, we would provide a stipend if they stay till the end. That, uh, we would cover, uh, their vacation. Uh. Uh, time, personal time. Uh, and that we would. Make, uh, another ti- town job available. Uh, if we had availability. The chief and I talked today, there are apparently two dispatchers who are interested. In what we talked about last week, twenty-two hour positions.
I worked at twenty-two over there.
I'm sorry, the twenty plus every other Saturday and all, an opportunity for four hours. So.
What about the, um, the concern that was brought to Craig? That can be looked into?
Vacation time?
Pay out of crew vacation. From one dispatcher.
We, you know, we have to pay it out. No. One of the dispatchers said that he bought back sixty hours.
Oh.
Paid seventy-five percent.
Oh.
But I don't know why he got paid seventy-five percent because that's not what the contract says.
I, I have not looked into that.
Seventy-five percent if you retire or die.
Right.
But.
Fifty percent, otherwise.
No, I didn't say that. Didn't say.
Well, basically we have one side, like, see another.
Yeah.
We've checked that.
So one person, uh, has a. Told a part-time job in Wilbraham. Two others will stay with us. So there's one at this point. Who, uh. Will leave on the thirtieth of June.
So the two that are staying, do we need to summon termination notices or are they new positions that they're taking on?
Well, if you look at the first paragraph, I said termination from your dispatch position. Then down the bottom.
Great, because that, the, the contract also.
That's right. Yeah, it's not termination from the town, it's termination from dispatch.
And you have a new job description for the new role that's happening.
Yes.
So I guess. I guess my question then, if, if they're terminated in dispatch position, if they're being hired in the new role. Do they get the payout for their own locations and stuff?
Good question. They probably do because they're being terminated from dispatch. This would be a new hire. But I will. Well, we'll.
Well, that's the next question. It brings up the question of testing, et cetera. Are you still paying years of service? But actually. How are these employees being classified in terms of? You know, things like that. Are they under the standard kind of family employee work for? Because they're not, because there is no spot in the least part of Campbell for this type of roles.
No. So we have, we have to draw up a description.
Is it going from a union position?
I understand that, but I'm also, so this gets into the question of, are you investing your time, your years of service for vacations, et cetera?
More problems. Uh, we need to get the letter out, uh.
Yeah, I'm saying be aware.
Now, and then deal with these before the end of the month.
Right. What is it's fine to be ran by the law, it's fine. Oh, rescission of the emergency order. I think it was on March twenty-third, we issued an emergency order. Well, after the governor refused the twenty, we issued it on the twenty-third. We should rescind it. I noticed the governor in rescinding his order said, uh, he's rescinding it effective June.
July fifteenth. I'm sorry, June fifteenth.
So, do you want to do the same?
Yes, and we're going to continue with the, uh, opportunity for these further governors.
They, they haven't decided that yet. And, uh, and we encourage everyone also, even though they already have been rescinded, to get vaccinated, wear a mask if you're uncomfortable. In, in public settings. Social instance.
Doc, they're doing vaccinations. You can't do that to a contract.
Seven months?
And, uh.
And come over to pick one.
And encourage everyone to get vaccinated.
CBS, CBS is. I'll make a motion to rescind the state emergency as of June fifteenth, consistent with the governor's right of the day.
Second motion.
Go in favor.
Hi.
Right, uh, the updates, please hiring, consular's are hiring.
Uh, there are five candidates, uh, being interviewed tonight.
Uh, new firefighter hiring.
Uh, no progress on that has been reported to me at this point.
The chief wants to know whether we want to do that.
Yeah, I sent emails that we're going to invite the chief.
I did.
Always having a train.
Yeah.
But we want to direct them to post.
I think you're approaching a way to please chief, right?
Uh, records clerk hiring, we've talked about that.
Yeah.
Police contract.
I still do not have any, uh. Uh, set of, uh, items from the union. Apparently it will go until the twenty-eighth of this month. Until they have the election. So there isn't any way that they will have a contract for July first. Um. I'm not hearing any, anything negative about that. That's just the way. It's going to play out.
It's not the first time. Part of the force moving or the negotiation. For qualified for what's. Positions for.
And I updated you on the, on the garage project, uh. Those responses came one day after the posting on the central register, which was June second.
When's the one?
Sixteenth, I believe. I have to, I have to check that.
You got any new submissions since that first day? You said you got those submissions within one day. Have you got?
Uh, we had a couple, uh, at the end of last week. I don't think I got any today.
Let's say between twelve and fourteen.
Fourteen.
I did a bidding.
Hey, sharp pencils, that'll be good.
Can we go back to the police contract?
No.
This issue of. Why don't we don't have dispatchers. Uh, filling in for sick calls and. Sick calls and, and, uh. You know, when they do the traffic.
That word detail.
Road meter. Right? And they want seventy-five dollars a week.
I had a long talk with the chief today about all this. I said, no. I said, perhaps twenty-five. I said, but not seventy-five.
This is about potential things in the contract?
No, this would be.
Yeah.
Transition.
This would be.
This would be relatively, this would be a new responsibility.
I know, but this is part of, again, this typically is.
And this would be part of the contract negotiation. Right.
Yeah. Sometimes, it's good to be aware of.
But I can't.
They want something extra done on the intro.
I, 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 I can't, I can't resist saying. If you're a supervisor, isn't that part of your responsibility to make sure that? The, the, the office is covered or the job is covered? I mean, why do you have to get more money to do that? The upside, we're negotiating. All right. Uh, the water project, we know they're.
Yeah.
Okay, and, uh, is Anthony's dental on?
Yes, he was.
Anthony, still here? And just going to give us a brief update. How are we doing with the calls? Where are you?
Yep, well, so we transitioned to phase two for us taking the non-emergency calls June second. And it's been pretty, pretty well ever since. No, no real issues at all. So it's going really well.
Any word from the state regarding the grant?
I haven't heard anything yet, which I think is a good thing, but I was told that mid-June, early July, we should have our letters that give us the amount that we were awarded.
Did you hear the fiber line is installed or not installed?
What about the fiber line, the cyber optic line?
That'll be included in the development grant that I applied for back in March.
It has not been commenced.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for everything you're doing.
No problem. Thank you.
We got, we talk about this. The BFW. We have a question with BFW, one day generalizes.
So we have a request for a fiftieth birthday party, birthday party, a Jack and Jill memorial service at the pavilion. Four dates in July, June, and August.
A second motion.
Go in favor. Yeah, and the gray horse one, can you just dig out the other, the old ones so we can look at it?
We also have this thing from GEO about outside dining.
Yeah.
Yeah, what's the clarification from the state? Extension of outside dining.
That's extended now until November, I believe.
Clarify that, so.
But I think in part, you know, this, this is going to take up part of the parking lot.
Well, same as last year.
That's my guess, but
Well, I always see this as committed as part of the state's emergency thing. I would not like to see this permanent. That thing without a full review by the planning, et cetera.
Well, and the same would be said for, like, Tina.
Right, which we allow that as part of the
As a temporary.
The same thing with Mountain View as well. But I believe Mountain View is applying to the planning board to do something a little more permanent, that structure of that. Which, if GEO wants to possess, there'll be a whole change in
Same here, we're good with it then.
On that, I would make a motion to grant the application for outside dining for the patient states for this type of use through the state.
Second motion.
Further discussion, all in favor? So you're going to do the, you're going to look up the
And there were, and a particular concern is Red Horse and some of the noise complaints that have been
We'll see.
And the other is the logic, Tina, can spell all the
And selective reports?
Oh, see, we have a consummating meeting tomorrow morning. I'm going to be bringing back the board request from the housing authority that we should be looking at to endorse hopefully for CPA funding for an issue they have. Building and how we are pretty aware of what's happening there. Obviously concentration on the building expansion for highway. And planning and courses and their public hearing for the solar installation, the landfill being pushed off. And so the legal review is being
John, having had the husband and daughter, what did you say about that?
Lisa has contacted me. They may have another CPA request.
Okay.
Town admission report.
We've already talked about most of these items. There are two, though, that we haven't discussed. The capital planning committee is interested in the appointment of a fire station study committee that will work with the chief to come up with a design that would be acceptable to the public and be, and capable of being funded by the town meeting. We have talked about that, but we haven't yet appointed that special committee. And then secondly, I did meet with senior center director this morning on a personnel issue, which I won't discuss in public, but you may want to talk with her about that.
I like the idea of the fire station study committee. I think we had talked about that before.
Yes.
After capital planning, capital referred that the capital planning committee really didn't want to get into the picking up, picking up the two-by-fours of the project.
Right.
They were looking more and more at orientated funding in our overall schedule. So they were looking for the board to really get into advertising, looking for a committee report with a report. I know we've had tremendous success of getting people to volunteer committees. And I think as a list of forty or fifty people.
And as a matter of fact, we had a request from someone today wants to be on the historical commission. And I suggested that they send that, a short note that if I could have just left soon.
Oh, I saw that. I saw that person at their meeting last week. Yeah. It's close by, can't complain. There we go. On that.
Anything else for the board? Favor.
Must be AT&amp;T.